Gentlemen, excuse me. This side of the table. Welcome to the full council meeting on the 30th of July. And before we actually start the meeting, I want to read out a couple of clarifications of the public forum. I'll keep talking, okay? Appears I've got to keep talking. Which is, might not be a problem. Okay, I'm just going to read this out now for clarification. What? Okay, right. There appears to be a misunderstanding of the three-minute speaking restriction in our standing orders. That is the maximum time a member of the public can speak, not an entitlement to speak. The idea... I'm really sorry about that, but I'm here in a... I'll carry on now. The idea of the public open forum is to seek information, to provide information on a service or function that impacts directly on the residents of Thetford and under the regalia of the town council. It is not intended to be a platform to express personal viewpoints or cover matters that are outside the powers of the town council. Thank you very much. Now, start the public forum then. Okay, we're going to start the public forum now, fifteen minutes, three minutes for questions. Yes, Mr. Williams?
Sorry, a couple of Sundays ago, a group of peace activists marched from Norwich to Lake and Heath by the three main towns in Norfolk. They disrobed Thetford, where some of us, including one of your colleagues, actually worked on them, including the legendary peace campaigner Elga Selter, who is, obviously way off the beat, and she's still does amazing stuff, and was actually known by the peace party, so a brilliant, good person. We didn't invite the mayor, unfortunately, he was at official engagements elsewhere. We didn't invite him to sit up either officially or unofficially, but as I say, we did have a small delegation to work on it. They actually set up a peace stand outside Lake and Heath, where they stayed for about ten days and then two weeks. One of the things that was suggested during our conversation was that there's an organisation called Mayor's for Peace, centre by the Mayor of Rochdale, and I'm sure the mayor knows, Rochdale is next, in fact, weeks now, August the 6th. So I think, I mean, I'd like to request that the mayor, the current mayor, joins this organisation of approaching 10,000 members now, that's mayors throughout the world, headed by the Mayor of Rochdale. So I might have to formally request that the, our current mayor, join this organisation. It's actually 2,000, yeah, which was also what they thought, oh god, they're never going to make that, that's actually a thing with it. So it's not a lot, not a lot. So, and obviously, not every mayor's been agreed to do that, so you know, there has to be a choice of each individual mayor, and being able to meet as many mayors as possible. Being in this safe place, and a site where nuclear weapons will be kept and stored, and that happens, those may be near nuclear accidents in the past, especially in the 50s and 60s, which was always a big disaster, so I asked the mayors, and seriously, add an extra, seriously, to that, join this organisation.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, I've just informed you that I have already started, and I've replied to the link, and I will be joining then. Okay? Anyone else? Get going.
Sorry, weeks ago, we spoke at council meeting about street lights, and there was a special report being sent in, can you guys answer it? No? It was the meeting with the government and leaders, maybe? There was a letter being sent out to Breckland Council about street lights not being repaired? Okay, so, I've read that this is now about four, five months. I've been trying to report six lies around. Terry German interviewed me, and he couldn't get it done. So I've done it this week, six separate reports, for the email to come back to me saying that the coast is now closed. I don't understand that, and I've not been able to get over anyone from Breckland to find out what's going on. Apparently, in their webpage, that the street lights get fixed within five working days, and we're now hoping five months. But the street lights that are out, the area where they're out, is used a lot by pedestrians walking from the Abbey Estate to Condon Street, I believe, Two Sisters. It's two of the main roads, very dangerous, because people speeding around here at night, and also, three on the estate where it's very dark. Hazards like car lumps and paint and so on, they can't see where they're probably.
Sorry, Gordon, just a couple of quick questions. There's Norfolk County Council look after some street lights in the town, as well as Breckland. You can normally tell by orange stickers and four numbers on the lampposts which they belong to. If you send me the numbers through, I'll do it myself, okay? If you mail it through to us, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll see you around the end of May.
No problem, okay? Yes, Mr. Taylor, hang on, three, we've got that side. Now, Mr. Taylor, go on, Mark?
Yeah, I've been on with others all afternoon today. I'm just not able to leave the fact that people were getting stabbed on Abbey Farm. I've just seen the whole of the, just the youth and the father, they were 10 minutes away from what happened yesterday. As my family left the area, all the emergency vehicles went past our cars as I got back to Thetford. Now, we've got people being stabbed there, young kids in community centres, we've got kids being stabbed here on Abbey Farm, we've got soldiers being stabbed in the streets. There's a lot of standing around, a lot of people at the minute. Now, we have a lot of strange people wanting a better way of hopping around and being housed in our area. Now, how many people is the question of being housed in our area and collected by the fire councils? How many of them are known to MI5 and the local police that have problems? And all the people in Thetford's shape? We need some answers to that, because the people where I come from, I just found out the local police knew the character, it was known to MI5, nobody was warned, I had to be, we've got three kids dead and six critical and vulnerable. So, how many of them are in Thetford? Are they home to the authorities and are we safe? Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. I mean, our hearts of thoughts go out to all the people concerned in this terrible tragedy. Thetford is a safe town. It always has been, it always will be. We always will have some, we always will have some incidents, but that kind of information we're not party to, we will have to, have to go to hire authorities, I really have no idea, you know, no one is up.
You can't sit down at the table, keep watching the book, get some answers and bring it back to you.
We have a town council here, send out an email and ask for a question. Okay? Next, please. Whoever that is at the back, because I can't see.
Yeah, me, I'm, you know, the chief, it says me, you know, the last something to talk about in the meetings, and the meeting has been a part of people from our back in the sixties, yeah, play and a month to celebrate. Questions, what's the council going to do to strike people and for the normal family?
What did you say?
They provide services like they do all the time.
Yeah, provide services like they do all the time, I just, I don't, it's weird, it's just, sorry, I'm just...
What's happening to us all?
Yeah, no. Okay, anyone else?
John, two very quick ones, one directed to the acting chairman, who sent me a recorded message telling me that they've been leaving my address on the day that letter is published. Actually, the letter turned up the following Saturday. And to my address, I did put an email to you, and I have no response from that email. Secondly, very quickly, last week, Breckland County Council discussed car parking charges in all their other towns, how come Thetford wasn't represented by Breckland Council that at those meetings?
That's, that's not, because the car parking charges are on the agenda, Thetford itself is fighting the car parking charges, they will come up, we are not, we do not have any representatives on cabinet from Thetford.
We'll be glad to listen to you later.
So, okay, I will look into that, to find out why, but I wasn't there, because I wasn't well, so that's for me personally, but... Anyone else? Okay, well, the car parking charges are on the agenda, we can't just, we're going to bring up them. Okay, next, please, anyone else? Yes, John, man, stand up.
Regarding the Stanley Hall charity, may I ask what's happening to the old collection, which as far as I know, has been in their basements for about 20 years?
Yeah, no problem.
The book collection is in storage, somewhere in Thetford, where it's in a publicly controlled environment, and it's been saved for a day. The books that are in Thetford are in storage. There's a listing that we have somewhere of lots of the books, if you want, the idea of the whole standing in this trust is to actually take, eventually find some place to house those books, we're not at that stage.
Can we organize our bills?
Well, if you send me an email, I'll speak to the partners in GW Stanley Hall charity. We do reply to emails, we are very, I've never received an email from you.
Vic, can you stop talking over paper, please? If you want to listen to this, wait till someone's finished, okay? Thank you.
If I could just, I haven't ever received an email from you. You can show that to me, often meeting, thank you.
Just send it, send it. Okay, right, anybody else? Okay, thank you, we'll now return, and start the main meeting. Item 195, to involve declarations of any peculiary interest. Item 19724, apologies for absence, 19624, sorry. Thank you very much, Karen. Anyone else? Okay. Item 19724, confirm the minutes of the full council meeting held on the 23rd of June, to agree the accuracy of the minutes, I wasn't here, so... All agreed?
Good.
And no one again? Last one. Okay. Right. 19824, committee minutes, to receive the following, the community and environmental services on the 2nd of July. The chair, that is? Mr. Cates, I'm there.
Let's do that.
Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to present the minutes for the community environment committee meeting on the 2nd of July, there was one recommendation, only for the other items for resolved business. I present the minutes to the chair.
Okay, we need a proposal for the recommendation in a second, please? Yeah? Okay. All in favour? Anyone again? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Planning Committee, meeting on the 9th of July. Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I presented the planning committee meetings on the 9th of July, there were no recommendations of resolved business, and I'm saying this for accuracy to be asked, please.
Okay, all in favour? Anyone again? Abstentions, no. Okay, thank you. Heritage and Events Committee on the 9th of July as well, the minutes, I'll attend the chair of that.
Sorry, I tried to give minutes, all sorts of matters having to matter.
Okay. Everyone in favour? No one again? Abstentions? Right. Corporate Services Committee on the 23rd of July.
I'm happy to present the corporate services committee on the 23rd of July, the record one week ago, item was 18524, that the internal audit report natural responses were to be confirmed for council as acting chair of the...
Okay, do we need one recommendation, yeah? Yeah, do we have a proposal in a second, please? Mr. Chair, Sir Jefferson? Okay. All in favour? Okay. Quite right from this paper, what's next? Oh, yeah, this is the exciting bit now. Okay, the mayor's remarks and reports, it's, I've been there now for about two and a half months. It's been really good and enjoyable, I've thoroughly enjoyed events on me too, I don't, and some of the stuff has been, had my comforts on, but it's been really good. When you see the list of the events, the green fair is not on the list, but it should be, because that was a good, good day. I really enjoyed the diversity of the day on the Saturday, I opened a pride, then I went to the cricket club, I've been to the Thetford Singers, it's been really good, myself and my boss up there have really enjoyed going out, you know, the fun jobbie festival was incredible, and, you know, it's really great to see how well Thetford come out and support what goes on. We should be really proud of our residents and our public, the way they behave. Right. 224, town council representatives on other bodies, go round the table, let's start, youngest up, Huxman there.
Thank you, Chair. I attended the town hall meeting, the, I don't know what I'm calling it, I miss it, the town where they uplifted whatever one called, for the 20 million that would have been issued up. I attended as a representative for Terry German, because he's been unable to attend due to previous engagement. The board is pretty much set up, I did say that the town council wasn't entirely happy about the process and the fact that there was a letter going to him, which was agreed at the last meeting, and I did emphasise that it is the process that we're not happy with, not the individuals, because individuals may well have been the same, but the process of just, it's meant to be for Thetford, and by passing all of us, it was not really the way to be as fair. It was difficult to get to know the meeting, and there was another meeting arranged for tomorrow, where we was to take ideas of, again, it wasn't an official meeting, they was to take ideas of a quick fix, it's a wicked start, a very, very long process, but for the intent, the government's basically turned and said, hopefully, for a while, we don't know what's going to happen, whether it's they're going to call some, or, or Aaron and all of the regeneration projects that have evolved, but we're not allowed at this present time to have a formal meeting. I believe tomorrow is still going ahead, where we're going to have a little walk around Thetford, have a look at, down the river, various options, we were to look upon the retail properties that would, maybe like a nice indoor market or something of that like, or the possibility, if it can be achieved, but that's not going to happen now. One thing that we did agree at that meeting was that we've got enough contracts to get ready, there's enough things we've unlocked in Thetford potential, the town plan, the Breckland plan and the heritage master plan, to proceed with looking at what we can actually do. I would ask if anyone's got ideas of a quick fix, quick thing that would show you that it is working or what, it's going to work, you know, just contact Terry and whoever's going to be the town representative on the board, and I'm sure they might put the town council's views to the board when it's ready.
Okay. Thank you, Vic, thank you. I must admit, I share your frustration, not in the appointment, but in the procedure to get there, that is something we're working on. Okay, anyone else in turn for this? Okay, I'll come, Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, head. I've recently attended Nate Houston's Christ of Gerolochion, it seems to like that, with Breckland United Vice Relord. Young people are the future of our country, and it's vital that all the candidates responded well to hear the views and engage them in debate. It was really, it was really important that candidates listened to the views of the young people and answered their questions, and it was general consensus that a lot of young people feel taken for granted by politicians, but the issues young people care about were so important, some of the questions around unaffordable housing, to access to mental health services and the environment were high on their agenda. There's total credit to these young people, asking questions in front of 100 or so people, which was quite daunting and well received. And I also recently attended the official photo shoot and press releases, Everybody Has The Right To Play campaign, which was launched by Breckland and West Norfolk Yacht on behalf of Thetford Council.
I've got Rick back on again now.
You did.
Why'd you turn it off? Okay. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just make councillors aware that we did have a meeting at the Night Gentlemen Memorial Charity, on which the town councillors, the corporate trustee, councillor Land was appointed chair, and the business was resolved was to have a slight meeting in all the possibilities, but things aren't broken, but we're looking to have two meetings, yeah?
Yeah, that's better. Okay, anyone else? No? Thank you very much. Move on, reports from county and district councillors, we'll start at the top, Commissioner James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, good evening, everyone. At the start of this month, Norfolk County Council wrote to you, the town council, inviting you to submit your scheme for next year's parish partnership scheme. In the past, depending on the size of the scheme, us Norfolk County Councils have been able to support things with contributions for our lenders' highways plans, ultimately making more money available for any potential works. As always, we're all happy to work with you guys to benefit our affect of residents. Sadly, despite the recent glorious weather, Norfolk Strategic Flooding Alliance recently highlighted the remaining high groundwater levels, and the Environment Agency have reported that river flows over the last month were up to over 172% of the long-term average as additional water remains in the system, and that's following the considerable rainfall that we've all enjoyed. All of this means that the autumn flood risk is higher than we would normally expect following the summer period. Whilst the weather is good, now is the time to ensure our gutters, ditches and drains are blocked to avoid water buildup, a little bit of early maintenance and planning could go along well, and hopefully, we've got it scheduled in the ground here, because I know it's challenging. I've just had a notification literally this afternoon from National Fireways, that there's going to be some resurfacing works carried out in your bypass over the couple of nights, that's next Thursday or Friday, the 8th, 9th of August, that would be evening work, so between 8pm and 6am, weather permitting. Closure will be between the 1075 round facts of Don't Road through to the Croxton Junction, that's my public service mountain. And then, bearing in mind what councillor Peters has mentioned regarding the town board, and I do sit on that as a Thetford girl and a Norfolk County councillor, bear in mind that that fund is there to help improve our high streets. Hot press, Norfolk County Council's Love Your Market Town initiative returns following last year's successful pilot. It's a growth funding scheme, the investment fund is partnership between Norfolk County Council and Breckland District Council. Community groups or businesses can apply for a grant of up to £2,000, and that's to help generate football into our town centres. So, expressions of interest are on the Norfolk County Council website by the end of next one, please, and thank you. Thank you.
We've got round the table then, Stewart?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with Mayor Fennel, Chris Harvey, Norfolk County Council, Jamie Jones, we attended a most enjoyable free course lunch at the vice president's at the Thetford Cricket Club. Unfortunately, the weather wasn't very summery for our traditional summer sport. Thetford Cricket Club are one of the oldest clubs in the country, and councils, be it town, district or county, do not do it that to support grassroots sports, so especially in this town. So I urge local businesses to get behind our sports teams and then have the local organisations. Still on the sporting mode, with the back pay allocated to Breckland councillors, in which the opposition party decided to donate theirs back to local interests, I was happy to present Thetford Under-13s Clarets and Thetford Bulldogs Under-13s Girls with new match made footballs in the upcoming 2024/25 season, and I wish them good luck in next season. And also, I also presented Kirsty Turner, the manager of the Thetford Bulldogs ladies, in cold gratitude from His Majesty Lord Lieutenant of Norfolk, the Kirsty Services in grassroots football for the girls, after all, it's her game too.
Thank you very much. Councillor Land?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I continue to tell the local residents of a sign of substantial numbers of fuel bank vouchers and applications for households, or referrals across both local and town. I also continue to be related with Norfolk County Council regarding the treacherous state that passed, verges, edges and roads. During a recent conversation, I was informed that the town centre is much tidier, cleaner and better presented than another nearby market town. That is tribute, I believe, to the hard work and dedication of Thetford town team, it would be lovely to think that Norfolk County Council could supply equal ownership and emotional investment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Aime, Andy Blackmore? Councillor A, Andy Blackmore?
I attended a meeting of Breckland Beauty Committee, which was held at the Ancient House Museum this time. It's generally progressable, so it was nice to have it here. We see reports of activities in progress from both the Ancient House Museums and the Reston Hall Museum. Both of the numbers are higher, they're going up. The Ancient House continues to run school, history clubs and after-school clubs and activities for adults and children throughout the year. This is their centenary year, and they had a grant from the Landry that will help towards their operation for their centenary. I also attended Charles Bond Museum, which just these, uh, they're Breckland sensitive. They've had some difficulties fitting spaces with people resigning, but they have now a new chair and treasurer, and have had a meeting with Sue, who's on the museum development topic, that will offer support and advice, so hopefully it's a way forward for them.
Thank you. Dave? Councillor David Blackmore, anything?
No, nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Right, just something from me, just a quick, I had the great pleasure of attending planning this morning. Breckland, I'm looking, regarding the Abbey regeneration planning, we wanted to hold it in Thetford, we still think that's the best place for it. They seem to say that the technical skills or availability in the Carnegie aren't sufficient, which is surprising because they hold cabinet there. They're looking at some options like laying on buses to take people from Thetford to Durham, but nothing's assured as yet. And according to the Chair of Planning, this is several months down the road. Okay. Yeah, 202, 24. With G, update on the GW Standing For Charity. Councillor Wright?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When I was there, we did have a meeting recently, and we did circulate the drawn standing orders that are going to be put forward as part of the new governance model to the charity commission. We've developed this governance model to update the scheme, which governs the operation of the charity and redevelopment of those orders that would be more appropriate to a charity rather than a council. There are three sections of the West that have been distributed to councillors as the town councillors, it's what Solvac must be, and that's that it takes responsibilities according to the charity board. First document is a resolution that sets out the changes to the scheme. Document that is already lodged with the Charity Commission Resolution, and what changes are being made to the scheme and why the changes are being made. This document has been lodged with the Charity Commission, it's prepared in such a way that the Charity Commission clearly sees the lenience made. Elements are based on the operating model, recommended to the council based on the work done by Bates Wells Group and engaged on the charity's heart. Purpose of the changes is to make the scheme more appropriate and relevant to the charity. Setting document is a certificate of passing, which town council has to adopt, and which contains the information in the resolution, and this has to be signed by the Chair of Meeting, Mayor. The third document is a new standing orders of the charity, which are now complete and comprehensive. The board reviewed the document and responded to matters that require consideration. They were also highlighted in the documents distributed to councillors, and these have now been acted upon. Changes to the standing orders previously distributed to councillors relate to the terms of office board members, which still requires more work, but we can change that later on date. Meeting place of the board. If casual vacancies occur for either the Chair or Vice Chair, we know that success will be elected at the next meeting. Additional agenda items for the AGM may be added at discretion of the Chair and Clerk. Trust has nine board members, we may wish to increase that or extra independent members in the future, that doesn't tire hands, and earlier we still started nine. And where are positions vacated due to town council elections or casual vacancy, a new member will be appointed by trustee at the next meeting. We also look at the use of Kingstown's dance, and this has been confirmed by the insurers who have come and happened there. The appendix B, and has the matters reserved on the board, where the optional matters that the board decided were, that's what they have been deleted. Sorry, it's a little wordy. For those that did attend the standing board meeting, I thank them for their patience. It was an informal meeting, but it was necessary to get through the works that the clerk has been doing. So the decisions required tonight are to approve the Thetford documentation, those required to be submitted to the Charity Commission and signed by the Mayor, to approve the charity's standing orders, and to note that the town council will be reviewing the committee in terms of the charity's complaints, sorry, note that the town council will be reviewing committee in terms of the charity's complaints received. So I need to have those, they can propose all three on block, and I'm happy to propose them, because they have a second up. Councillor Land?
All those in favour? Anyone again? No, I have tensions, no. Okay. Thank you, Stewart. 203, 24. To confirm the appointment of the new town clerks on your rights under terms and conditions negotiated. Now, what we needed is a decision to formally appoint a new town clerk. Can we have a proposer and second up, please? Councillor Terry, second up? Do you want to say something?
This is regarding the mayor, isn't it?
You see, this, this second up for the proposal made by councillor Journey, just this second item, right? Everyone put up their hands, but we didn't know who it was.
Sorry. Town clerk, I just wanted to point out that I have a problem with process recruitment, helping excellent acting team at Breckland. I'm very confident we're putting a well qualified committee man that will be instrumental in driving our town council and this team, this town forward.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, I'll try this one. Apologies for being late. It's lovely to have you. I've been interviewing for the past two days, so really we're around someone. I am pleased to be here to speak on this particular item. As councillor Lab mentioned, there was a particularly thorough recruitment process for the new town clerk, consisting of a number of different stages. I'm divided with the candidate that was chosen. I think we're very fortunate to have somebody of the calibre join in the town council, and I'm very happy to hear a proposal, second up, if I may.
Second up? Second up, please? Thank you, Stuart. Sorry. Okay, all those in favour again? And anyone again? No tensions? Okay. Welcome. Right, committee, 204, 24. Committee changes and outside body appointments. Are we there to do this on block? Okay, can we have a proposer then, please? For the committee changes and the outside body appointments. Do the more you want here. Councillor Stewart, second up. Councillor Rindell. Thank you very much. That's far, right? Okay. Now, something quite good. 205, 24, sorry, it's new numbers. Response to Breckland Council parking charges. Councillor Stewart?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Breckland's very own 2024 to 2028 offer plan clearly states their goal is to help our high street and local businesses succeed through continued collaboration and to bring more activity and creativity into high street across the district. So you can cross the micro vision when it was announced that Breckland Council was pushed forward, introducing the high street across the market towns. There has been a lot of consultation with high street businesses, the proposals being created, leaving many businesses unable to convey the damaging impact that they feel these charges will have. We cannot on one hand promote and develop a high street, but in the same way continue towards a decline by introducing parking charges that massively disadvantage people that work in our town centres, who are already on low ages to begin with, turn future staff away from job opportunities in the town, and also people from the wider rural area who are coming into the town to shop. If people pan out to visit the town centre, then there is no home to work there too. I've studied the towns themselves, let alone the rural areas, do not have the infrastructure in place to offer improved bus service to counter any of the other issues. Once again, not only have the businesses been excluded from this discussion, but so have the wider public who are unable to express their concerns on this matter. In 2022, Breckland Council stated through their enterprise grant scheme, the district council will offer local businesses support in their own, that is, pure assault on the high street. Yet by adding parking charges, we're putting the nail in the coffin of any future businesses before we even have a chance to start. It's plain to see both customers and job employers will not be there if the charges are introduced and will only contribute to the death of the high street. The contradiction is obvious. The council that previously called on people to choose to shop local and help local businesses remain viable, and yet they now find it harder to put measures in place to make this impossible. That is why I suggest that we, as the council, write a letter to Breckland, signed by the Mayor, highlighting our concerns on this matter, and stating we are against the proposal of our parking charges in the market towns, as well as posting on our social media pointing the pub in the direction where they also object to this. I would also suggest, as part of sending the letter, we write to all local businesses on the high street requesting them to also acknowledge objections to Breckland, and we reach out to our neighbouring market towns, and suggest like they do the same. This is not the way of getting better out of the charges for the wider market town community as a whole. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Gibson? And then Councillor Land?
Yeah, thanks, I just, I think, again, what I said, I think, since we've had some other contact hours, and we've worked incredibly hard to promote the markets, promote the coast trends to get people coming into Thetford, that is one of our core goals, one of the goals, we're going to keep working towards over the next three years, maybe longer. And it's really so frustrating to see Breckland Council just land on this, a way that just runs counter to everything we're trying to do about being consulting with us, discussing with us. And I'm really shocked, and I really appreciate that we stand on this.
Thank you. Councillor Land?
Thank you, Councillor Stewart and Johnson. I support both of you, I think this is a good way of going forward, in terms of, as a town council. I noticed, Councillor Stewart, that you said people couldn't have a say on what they think about this idea. In that light, I start up on the issue, which, as we sit here, has got over 3,300 signatures. I think that demonstrates our strength of belief in, thank you.
Good, Councillor Terry?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm turning to, again, this is Breckland District Council's plans to introduce the car parking changes. It will put a financial burden on businesses and shoppers alike and make the town less attractive to visit. I'm concerned that Breckland District Council has an apparent lack of any consideration of improvements to public transport to mitigate the impact on private car use. The apparent lack of any consideration on the impact of residential parking on the streets will have implications in traffic congestion and pedestrian safety. The significant likelihood of cumulative adverse economic impact will be greater than anticipated revenues. Thetford, as we know, is a classed as a prior area, with a number of shops and businesses struggling to make ends meet, with the individual retailers located within the town itself are under threat. Introducing a charge of parking at the proposed sites will further damage the businesses and might force the closure of some. We wish to attract more people to the area, not drive them away. Also, many local people depend upon the car parks to park their cars, as there are no spaces near their houses. Charging for parking is unfair and is an additional financial burden. So generally speaking, a lot of people who park in the town centre car parks also work in the town centre itself, and it would be a major concern that some of our already hard-pressed residents could be paying up to £40 a week to work out tax income. Thank you.
Councillor Peters?
Thank you, Jim. Like everyone, I think we're all totally against the parking charges. We're in the middle of a project of developing a, I don't know if it's my fault, but attract more and more visitors to the town. Parking charges is going to kill that. They're saying with all of the town plan, the development plan, everyone's got, it will be killed by the inclusion of parking charges. But what I mean is, it seems that it's a prerequisite for residents' parking permits, because what happens when you start targeting parking? Or the car parking moves onto the streets, the residents complain because they can't park outside their house, parking charges end up in the juice, and then not only, they're just attacked by parking, they also attacked outside their houses. And I think this is the feeling of the way to react, and we really do have to oppose it as best we can.
Councillor Wright?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think we're picking up on all our residents' biggest, they're very much based, parking charges, and I'm quite happy to support a letter going in to convince them. However, I do feel we are probably in a situation where Breckland have made their mind up, this is coming, and we may be in a damage limitation process rather than being dealt with the battle. Looking at some of the proposals, I think, I think there's some little holes in there. The permit that they're proposing now is not going to be available at certain hours during the day, so if you're parking outside your house, you won't be able to use that permit. You will have to leave those extra hours inside your house. And they're going to be there decades, as other than getting caught in this trap with those, those, in other places, a residence family is what it says, and they can be parked there. I'm just worried that we've got a person in Spain sitting outside in Earl Street, this has been a week killing all our hostels, all offices in the town, and the knock-on effect is great there. Anecdotally, the Dantoni Museum, volunteers come from the Art Norwich Council, New Melbourne, all those people give their time to keep the town going as a tourist destination. Will they be interested in travelling at the moment, paying their efforts as they do now, plus car parking charges? Possibly someone will lose some of that. And it's interesting, some of the charges that are being put forward are higher in value than they are in the other market towns. Justification being that that has a higher tourist potential. Well, it's going to happen with our volunteers dropping, that was central maybe dropping as a result of the car parking charges coming in. The knock-on effect is like that, once you put parking charges in, people will be parked on the streets, the streets will then have to have either turn their parking or double line of enforcement. There are online costs to enforcement, and I think some of the figures that Breckland have put there, you know, the capital of Alford, putting the machines in and their enforcement is something which makes it not as big of a cash cow as they would hope. But also, I think Thetford hasn't gone one or two big companies, got lots of little ones, and they do serve their residents. You know, Thetford is a big city where they've got a lot of stories to deal with. I do accept that visitors from afar do expect to pay for parking, and we experienced that at Dantoni's, when we come and say, where's the machine, when do we pay? But for people who live locally or just travel in from villages, will they be able to come into the town centre now? No, they'll go to Tesco, or say it's reasonable, park up at the outside, units which will kill the town centre. So I think we just need to be mindful, rather than just go against it, think about some of the detail there, and go against some of the detail, because I think Breckland's plans, whatever, so I think we need to be armed with all the information.
Councillor Rindell?
No, Mr Mayor, we should not suggest in council, but Breckland will listen to what people say. I'm a bit disappointed by this, it's very short-sighted. I do wonder whether we have, whether we're going by approaching the other market towns to make sure that they are on the same side and to cooperate with them on the word assumption that they are. I do think there's an issue with on-street parking, referred to just a moment ago. There has been talk, hasn't there, of banning on-street parking and attempting to enforce kind of no parking anywhere on the street in Thetford system, which I anywhere on the street in Thetford system, which I think is, I think would make it even worse. It would be intended presumably to force people to use car parks and to pay for them. As far as I'm aware, visitors being expected to pay. I don't know, I'm looking around to visitors who say that they've done their homework, they've decided which place to come to for a day or even a couple of days. And is a factor that Thetford offers free parking to them if they say want to stay overnight, if they want to stay for a couple of days. Because some concern would be significant. So I'm not sure that we are right to say that visitors ignore the fact that parking's free. I think it's a benefit to them. So can we please work together with the other towns to do the very best we can to make Breckland reconsider? Let's not give up just too easily.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Obviously, I'd like to suggest that we get a couple of councillors together to draft this letter, pass, bring it to us and we'll send it off, yeah? So you can-
Just copy it to the towns, doesn't that do?
Yeah. Yep. Okay. So we're all in, can we have a proposer for this, please? Mr Jefferson, Councillor Jefferson, second? Are you all in favour? No one again then? No tensions? Okay. 20624. This is yours, but-
In 2023, the council decided to buy Gleep Forest. Initially, we were looking for a licence so that we could put pocket parks on it. And Breckland refused to do that, they said we actually had to buy that. They offered the land for sale to us for £2,000. And basically, we just got you all the paperwork. We have a property, our solicitors have prepared a property report to them. It's similar items that are put behind me. Bearing in mind that the value of the property is £2,000. I'm not sure we need to indemnify ourselves, take out building insurance, be concerned about the overage agreement and do land surveying because I think there's an issue of materiality. We could spend thousands and thousands of pounds, spend £2,000 on a piece of land. So the solicitors have given us some advice, I've summarized it into the table below me. And it's really a matter for the council to assess whether they're happy with those responses and we go forward on that basis.
It was fast, sorry, I wasn't looking. Councillor Rindell first up?
I'm really pleased to prospect that we buy this land. Part to provide a playing area for children in a near close area at the moment. They still have to cross Vicarage Road to get into an area quite far away for almost all of them than a near close area would be. I think we want to look after in a sense of providing something which is sufficient for children to play on. But I think just a pure safety measure for young people, this is a good buy.
Can still call him Councillor Jeremy? Yes. Councillor Jeremy.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to see that this has progressed. Slightly frustrating that it's taken almost a year to get to this point. I hope when we come to review our contracts that we look at our legal support and see if there might be a speedier solution in the future because the slow pace of change is incredibly frustrating. And as Councillor Rindell mentioned, that particular area has very few pieces of public open space. It really is quite a high potential of open space land. And some time ago, I've been trying to develop that particular area, something like five houses on it. And it really was quite impressive to see local residents there rallying together to object to that result. And fortunately, it quickly translated that an admission would not likely be granted for all houses. And it was indeed a worthless piece to Breckland. I think I was the one that suggested we try and get it from Breckland because frankly, I trust the town council to look after other open space better than Breckland council in the future. But I remain incredibly annoyed that we're having to pay for it, particularly when Breckland are giving away freely other pieces of land, evenly for other projects. But here are pieces of land which they determine is of no financial value. We're having to pay for it and we're having to pay for the legal cost, it really does frustrate me. And it's a number of examples of where the town council is taking on more and more responsibility from the district council, which is much larger than us, has much more resources and finances at its disposal. But reluctantly, it's the right thing to do and we should take it on. I've read through the cards, suggested responses and I'm perfectly happy with all of them. But can we please hurry up and finalize this as quickly as we can?
Okay. The recommendation to a council is we support the office's suggested responses. Can we have a proposer, a second? Do we need a proposer, a second? Him? And him? Sorry. Okay, community engagement. Anything?
It's this meeting decides.
Anything we want to put out now? And so just-
I'm not sure what I have. His connecting problem with the council was community engagement and parking charges. But just make sure we act on that, the encroach which we respond and get a few things as well.
I would agree with that. I think possibly we should also look at the idea of having a gazebo on the market, bits and pieces in the future to help support this as well. Okay. Committee officers update?
There's nothing to update.
Nothing at all, thank you very much. Okay then. 20924. Exclusion of press and public. To consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies Admission to be Act 1960, the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Do we all agree?